Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Wednesday, June 28, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session to receive a Schmidt Island development update.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for June 28, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is Schmidt Island Development. I will turn it over to Dubuque Racing Association President and CEO Alex Dixon.
Good evening, everyone. It's exciting to be here. Thank you very much again, Alex Dixon. I hope you serve as the President and CEO at Q Casino. And I first want to thank you for the opportunity to present before you. We've been working diligently with not only you as the council, but specifically staff. And I'd like to take just a minute to just acknowledge the folks who have gathered here in the room. Primarily, we've got a number of the members from our Q Casino team who do all the hard work each and every day alongside the folks at the Diamond Joe as well, who comprise the DRA. You're going to hear a number of folks who will be presenting before, but I'd like to just take a second and recognize them and thank you guys for coming out. I really appreciate it. Secondly, I would love to take just a minute to commemorate the City of Dubuque on really winning the Destination Iowa Grant. We've got a plaque here that I'd love to present to the mayor. And if we could have just a quick photo before we hop in, it'd be tremendous. And so it reads, "Commemorating the City of Dubuque for the Destination Iowa Grant of $3 million for the construction of an open-air amphitheater on Chaplain Schmidt Island." It recognizes the Iowa Economic Development Authority, the City of Dubuque, the team at Chaplain Schmidt Island, DRA, Q Casino, and the Diamond Joe. And I love a picture, but I really would love if all of the team who is here tonight would come up to me, up to the desk, just for a quick picture with you as I present it to you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. That sounds great.
Thank you.
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up. Come on up. Come on up. How's it going? I'll try to make myself as short as I can. Did we leave anybody to take the picture? The whole team is there.
One, two, three. All right, great.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd also specifically like to call out so many of the City of Dubuque staff. Just again, a reminder, we meet with city staff literally every week for an hour. Being listed as a top priority through your goal-setting process provides us an opportunity to make sure that we're engaging with the team. And so if you get nothing else out of this presentation, as we would respectfully request the opportunity to continue to be a top priority for the city as we go through the goal-setting process. And tonight is really about providing an update about what we've been up to, both on the private side as well as with regards to the Schmidt Island development process. Steve Sampson Brown, Jill Connors, Terry Goodman, Dave Lyons, Marie Ware, Anderson Sanchi, Wally Wernamont is a core group, along with many others, but that's a core group who is committed to making sure they're engaging. And so we are very grateful for your leadership and participation. So tonight, we have a couple of things. This is a great work session. Again, we thank you for this opportunity. But we're going to provide you with an update about what we're doing on the private side from DRA with regards to development of a new integrated resort that will help to bring really a great amenity to our community. We're going to be focused on the core casino, as well as a new family entertainment zone, as well as a new hotel that is exciting. We're going to be back before you once we have all of our loan documentation, all of our leases, all of the materials that we're working privately with Krena, Mike, and the rest of the staff. And there'll be a time to formally approve the documents as we move forward. But tonight is really about Schmidt Island, which is a great community resource. And we have moved forward by engaging a group of consultants whom you will hear from tonight, really about all of the decisions, as well as the kind of the key questions that we're working through that we, as a group, are going to have to ponder. And the best way to frame this up is imagine if this council were to issue an RFP 18 months from now about what the city would like to see happen first, and a set of priorities so that we, as the DRA, can help you to effectuate those goals. And so part of this is you're going to see a lot of images, a lot of things from our team as it relates to the master plan. Master Plan, as a reminder, was approved by this body in 2014. It was updated in 2017. And we've now engaged a group of consultants to go and help to prioritize that list. But success tonight won't be saying yes to one thing, but what we do have to do is to make sure that you all informed about the process. And really, as we go through the remaining of time that we have the consultants engage, is to help inform us about what are the key ways that it's going to be critical to help us prioritize this list of actions. So tonight is not about solutions. Tonight is not about specific costs of projects or giving specific input. Tonight's about raising the right questions so that we can be informed, so that once we're done with this project, we have clear direction about the set of priorities under which we should pursue. So tonight is really about information, and this is a great setting and format for it. We've got a number of presentations. You'll hear from Stacy Kansky, who is our Chief Commercial Officer, about our development. You hear from Kathy Burr, who's our Director of Strategic Philanthropy, as well as Schmidt Island Development. And then you'll hear from Ryan Peterson with RDG, who will introduce the group of consultants we'll go through. We hope we'll be able to accomplish this within the hour and a half we have allotted. And so I'm so excited to get right into it. And so with that, I'd like to bring up Stacy Kansky, who will walk us through the core parts of our private development. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. So I am really excited to share some developments that we are working on over the Q Casino. We do consider it one of the anchor assets of Schmidt Island. And I'm going to show you some renderings so you can see the vision ahead and where we plan to go. The renderings really will give you a good feel directionally, although they're a little bit subject to change, it'll give you a really, really good indication of our future direction. So first, I'd like to just remind you that there are five phases within the overall property development plan. The first phase, which is we're about to embark on, is setting up our temporary casino. That temporary casino will be a rebuild or a remodel of the former Grandstand Racing Area on the upper casino floor. And then, as we're doing that, we are going to be kind of parallel pathing. We will be renovating the main casino on the lower level. So when you walk into the casino and you make a right currently, that entire casino space, inclusive of the Q showroom, will be renovated and remodeled. And I have a couple of rendering of that I'll share with you in just a moment. Simultaneously, we'll be working on a family entertainment area. Super, super excited about this. This is an opportunity that we have not really been able to welcome families and people of all ages previously. So future state, when you walk into the main doors of the property, if you go right, you will go into the main casino area, which is 21 and up. And if you go left, you'll be entering our family entertainment area, which will be inclusive of all ages, including the Family Entertainment Center, sportsbook, sports bar, banquet space, and party rooms as well. And then, to top it off, we are working on a new hotel. So the new hotel will be an eight-story, over 100 rooms Hilton Tapistock Collection that will be adjacent to the current Hilton Garden Inn. So it'll be between the Hilton Garden Inn and our current casino. And it will be inclusive of an upscale elevated rooftop restaurant that will really encompass probably the best views in all of Dubuque, so overlooking that mighty Mississippi and the amazing bluffs. And then, to top it all off, we will come back and address the exterior upgrades. So a remodel of the exterior facades, the outdoor signage and landscape, and surface area parking. So the ultimate goal is when you are entering our parking lot and you're looking out at the property, it looks like one inclusive cohesive resort. So here you see the rendering. I feel a picture is worth 1,000 words here. So you can see, this is a quick glance of our new lower casino. And what you're seeing here is right when you walk into that, the bar will be relocated. So as soon as you walk in, you have the immediate wow factor. Very inviting, creates that great vibe and energy that we want to convey throughout the property. Next is, this is what we call the mood board. So it is very directional, just to kind of give you a look and feel of what we aspire to have in the family entertainment zone. So this area will be complete with high-end arcade games, duck pen bowling, axe throwing, digital axe throwing, a new sports bar, which will be relocated into this area, sportsbook, banquet space, and party rooms. So while this will really be designed for adults, it will be welcome to those of all And here is the construction of our crown jewel, if you will. It is our new eight-story hotel topped with a rooftop restaurant, bar, and event space. This hotel gives us a great opportunity to create a new brand and tell our unique story, including some of those local assets that we have. What we're looking to do is really build this and construct it with utilizing a lot of our own resources here in our backyard. So you'll see in the design, a lot of that limestone, precious metals, a lot of the prairie grasses, a lot of glass, so we can really be, you know, modern and have the beautiful views throughout. And then, an open-air component on that rooftop restaurant that we're designing so that we can really utilize all four seasons. That rooftop restaurant will have a lot of, lot of opportunities to different groups, from corporate parties, to casual diners, to private events. And again, we'll have some of the best views in all of Dubuque overlooking that river and the bluffs. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy to talk about Schmidt Island Development.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for allowing us to be here and for continuing to place Schmidt Island as a priority for the city's staff. Schmidt Island has been quite the buzz over the last year. We've really gained a lot of momentum. We've had a master plan that has been around for a long time, and it's very exciting to be in a position where we're starting to move forward with that. As you know, Schmidt Island, the vision for it is to be Dubuque's gateway to entertainment and the Mississippi. And our mission is to be a connected island that welcomes visitors and community to recreation, entertainment, and the outdoors. We have quite the amenity in Dubuque that is 100% underutilized. We have the casino, which is great, but we really want to make the island a tourist destination. We want to make it an amenity where the citizens of Dubuque and the tri-state community can come down and visit. We have our City Council-approved Schmidt Island Master Plan goals, and those goals, just as a reminder, are to connect the riverfront, to celebrate the island's islandness, to put your feet in, and to spend the day and night and visit in any season. On this slide here, we do have a chart that is put together to help explain the relationship between the different amenities, the different organizations that are involved with Schmidt Island and the implementation of the master plan. So we have our DRA Board. The DRA does contribute 1/3 of the annual distributions to that Schmidt Island Development Fund to help with the implementation of the master plan. We have Q Casino. They operate the gaming and the entertainment facility. We have our Schmidt Island Development Committee. This is the group that oversees the 1/3 spending of that Schmidt Island Development Fund from the DRA. And that group consists of members of the DRA Board of Directors. And lastly, and the newest created group, is the Schmidt Island Development Corporation, which is a separate 501(c)(3). We did find out about a month ago that everything has been approved and we are official, which is great. I serve as the President of that Board, and we also have eight other members from the community and organizations that are stakeholders down there on Schmidt Island. Here's our Schmidt Island Development Board. And with that, that group is here to help facilitate the redevelopment of Schmidt Island. They will manage the city assets on Schmidt Island, and we will help facilitate charitable contributions for implementation of the Schmidt Island Master Plan. So having that separate 501(c)(3), DRA is a 501(c)(4). People aren't able to make donations to help with the different assets or different upgrades to the island. So having this separate 501(c)(3), this will allow people, organizations, to help with the master plan implementation by donating and making it a tax-deductible donation. The first asset down on the island was the, used to be the Mystique Ice Center. Now we have the Dubuque Ice Arena. Thank you to the partnership with the City of Dubuque. Over $6 million was invested in that ice remediation, and we have an incredible asset that we are now managing by the DRA. And then, we also put together a Schmidt Island Project Tracking. This is to help the DRA, to help the Schmidt Island Development Board, as well as the city and the community as a whole, to see the projects that we have that are ongoing or complete down on Schmidt Island. This chart has also been included in a mailer that will be going out to residents in the utility bills, but it's showing over $120 million in projects either down on Schmidt Island or the surrounding area that are currently in the works. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Alex.
Thank you, Kathy. And just to highlight a couple of the key points, specifically as it relates to the different entities, Schmidt Island Development Corporation, just going back to this chart. I think it's really important, it's really important that we understand kind of, you know, again, the purpose of each of these. And I'll give you a couple of examples. If someone wanted to make a donation to help support the new Veterans Memorial Day Parade that we now have successfully done on the island, before, that person or individual couldn't donate directly to the city, those are called taxes, or couldn't donate directly to the Q Casino, that's called revenue. So having a separate organization that someone could say, hey, we want to do a bench, or we would like to commemorate, that is the purpose. If people get excited about, let's see, you could imagine a bridge lighting project. Having a vehicle that can be the recipient of those types of funds will help us facilitate things that are specifically on the island. I think it's important of the 1/3 of profits that this body allowed the DRA to be the stewards of, that is what we, as the DRA Board, and then have a subcommittee of that Board, who helps to be, you know, those stewards. But what was really important over the last two years, we've been doing a lot of the things that are really important of the plumbing or the infrastructure. We've extended the lease there on Schmidt Island that DRA is a steward of. We've enabled our ability to be able to take out a mortgage that we're going to be back in front of you for. We are now working together to make sure that we have an interest reserve, that we'll talk about again later, to make sure that we, as the DRA, have the funds necessary to be able to make sure that we're making good on our payments. And I think what's really important is when we talk about the commercial development that Stacy outlined before, all of those are funds that are issued by the DRA and won't impact the taxpayer of the private development. There's other things that we're collaborating on, the amphitheater, where we're collaborating and leveraging the power of the City of Dubuque. But all the things that are really commercially related, those are things that we, as a DRA, a separate standalone organization, that are pursuing. And so I just wanted to highlight those. And I also want, I'd be remiss if I did not recognize Krena Brumwell as well, who meets with us tirelessly. So thank you, Krena, for all of your help and support. But now, we'd like to switch gears over to, over to, to move forward with our private consultants who are moving forward with the development plans as it relates. I do want to highlight, lastly, is this image here, which is the RAZE, which is the RAZE Grant that we, again, collaborated on. You know, the City of Dubuque has done a phenomenal job over the years, really responding to highly complex grant proposals that have been issued, in this case, by the United States Department of Transportation. Just recently, Mr. Mayor, I know you were able to welcome Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg here to town, who we are able to walk through this plan. And again, as a reminder, we were able to collaborate with city staff by providing $750,000 from the DRA, in addition to those resources provided by the city, to win an ultra-competitive grant that will help build bridges to employment and equity. This, as we all know, train traffic will increase in our community, and having an overpass that will connect Schmidt Island to the north end, to our communities, is going to be tremendously phenomenal. And so I think it's just yet another example of the benefit of us working together. And so with that, I'd like to bring up my partner, Ryan Peterson, to work through our next presentation. Ryan, please take it away.
All right. Well, thank you, Alex. My name is Ryan Peterson. I'm with RDG Planning and Design. And tonight with me, Mike, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure can. Mike Jansen, Strand Associates. We're located at 900 Jackson Street, Suite 110. Thank you.
And Chris Brewer with AECom, based in Chicago, providing economics and financial support to the team.
Thank you, gentlemen. So tonight, we have a brief agenda for you. We're going to talk a little bit about the background of our planning project, the strategic approach that we're taking, looking at the various capitals or the systems on the island that impact what we believe the appropriate uses and the potential financial feasibility. Chris will share about the economic analysis. Mike will talk about the flooding and some of the concerns related to that, and then I'll walk through the development program. Before we jump in, there's a few additional team members who are not here tonight, but their role is very important as well. So when we start to talk about the land uses, the uses within the proposed buildings, parking becomes a concern. So Walker Parking and their team is helping guide us, as well as Impact 7G. They're an environmental firm that specializes in ecological restoration. And so I think it was said earlier, the natural resources, the amenity, the river, is a huge part of what we're doing, and it's one of the key drivers of bringing people down there. We recognize that and are putting specific actions in place to help guide how we can improve the natural resources down there. So with that, a few things here. So on the slide, you see three different iterations, different focuses, different plans, but with some common themes. In 2014, much of what Alex, Kathy, and Stacy walked through was initiated by this, this idea of the island resort. I think up on earlier, there was a diagram that outlined the various nodes within the island, and that very much has helped guide what you helped define in 2017, and many others in the room here, as the placemaking plan. So together, those two efforts, one focused on private, one focused on public amenity, and then ultimately, in 2017, that planning effort helped kickstart the improvements down at the Veterans Memorial. Fast forward to 2022, we continue to carry many of those themes forward that were in 2014 and 2017. And while not an official document, this was used to help show how an amphitheater may fit behind the casino. So that's where this exhibit comes into play. And so it's exciting to realize that many of the things that have been decided upon over the past 10 years or so are starting to come to fruition, and there's a lot of opportunity here for things in the future. One other key thing I'd like to point out, and Chris will go into detail about this, is in 2014, housing was one of the uses that was emphasized in the plan. In 2017, in working with our team and members of DRA and the city, we didn't know if it would be appropriate to have a highly recreation focus with a lot of entertainment, with, you know, concerts. And so we elected to amend the planned unit development code that governs the island to remove residential. We have now, based on Chris's market research and some of the changing economic environments, believe that residential may be an appropriate use. And so that's one of the policy considerations that we'll bring back to you in the future if you believe what you're seeing here is advantageous to you and the community. So with that, I'm not going to repeat all of this because Kathy spoke to this, but one of the key items here on this screen is item four. We're looking to attract investment from local, regional, and national sources. And we believe there's an opportunity here to continue the momentum that you have in the north port and carrying that thread of green along the river all the way up to Schmidt Island. We talked about the RAZE Grant and connecting to that. So you are investing in assets around the community that make this island much more appealing when you think about the circulation to the island for the future. And so how does that change things? And we're going to talk a little bit about that. And then, on this slide here, what was it, 120 million? That's a big number. And when you are investing that amount of capital into an island, we'd like to leverage that and continue to snowball that. And so how can we get a greater return on the city's investments, a greater return on the Q's and DRA's investments? That's a huge opportunity, and so we're looking to continue that snowball. And then, you know, we believe that, you know, I mentioned the strategic approach. We want to right-size things. We want to make sure that the market is driving that and that we are setting the framework for what could be a really exciting development in, you know, five years or so, even less. So I already mentioned our strategic approach. Just a quick recap here in terms of history. 1930, there was no Piastachio Channel. So think about that. Piastachio Channel was dredged between 1930 and 1950 and used to fill in some of the lower areas over there along Kerper Boulevard. And so when you think about flooding, and we'll talk a little bit about that, and the context of the Mississippi River watershed basin, water's going to go where it wants to go. And it sounds obvious, but I think one of the things we're starting to see here is the river is an ever-changing system, and we have to respond to that. And so looking at how can we recreate in a river, how can we leverage the potential islands or sandbars that are popping up, knowing that you're on the doorstep of one of the largest fish and wildlife refuges in the nation, literally in the upper right photo there, some of those islands. And so there's a lot of untapped potential to connect to the natural assets. It also was once, I forgot to mention, an airport, also, as you know, a landfill. Flooding, as Mike will talk about, is another layer. All of these are potentially constraints, but they're also opportunities, and it's what makes Schmidt Island unique. If you didn't have, if the island was not a landfill at one point in time, we would not be able to develop out there. You think about that and the amount of fill, because the elevation of Miller Riverview Park was generally the same elevation throughout the entire island. And so being able to be out there and above those base flood elevations for the 100 and 500-year, you know, sometimes good can come from some harm. And so we're moving forward and not looking backwards. Wetland mitigation areas, so back up a moment. Impact 7G, they're an ecological firm. Part of their scope is to look at the natural habitats on the island. We learned, I'm not going to remember the name of the bird, but there's a very rare bird out here, and apparently, there's a huge billion-dollar marketing market for birding. It was a fun thing to learn, but the more and more heron pond, the eagles, there's this opportunity to improve that. They're looking at the wetlands, they're looking at the sites that were purchased by the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and then are also doing a natural areas assessment. So you have clear actions as to how to manage the resource, all the while working with the agencies who govern the island, specifically the Army Corps of Engineer and the Fish and Wildlife Service. So floodplain, the floodway, I'm going to turn it over to Mike, as it's all interrelated. You can't just look at one without looking at the other. So with that, Mike?
All right. Thanks, Ryan. So as Ryan mentioned, my role here is to do the floodplain analysis for this as a really important component, obviously, to any development on the island. Maybe I'll try to make floodplain sound a little fun and interesting in the process here, but I'll try to do that very quickly. Oops. So this first map really is to try to get our perspective, our level set here. So there's, we're trying to do a few things with this slide. One, the purple area is 100-year floodplain, and that's the area that's inundated under a 1% chance event or 100-year event. The 500-year floodplain is a lighter purple color. And I do have a correction to make. That actually should be the 0.2% event, so there's a typo there. But again, that's a much less frequent event, obviously, and we'll talk a little bit about that as we talk about resiliency. And then the floodway. And the floodway is basically that line that runs along the eastern side of the island on the backside of Miller Riverview Park and along Chaplain Schmidt Drive. And that area to the right of that, out towards the river channel... So there's, we're trying to do a few things with this slide. One, the purple area is 100-year floodplain, and that's the area that's inundated under a 1% chance event or 100-year event. The 500-year floodplain is a lighter purple color. And I do have a correction to make. That's actually should be the 0.2% event, so there's a typo there. But again, that's a much less frequent event, obviously. And we'll talk a little bit about that as we talk about resiliency. And then the floodway. And the floodway is basically that line that runs along the eastern side of the island on the backside of Miller Riverview Park and along Chaplins Schmidt Drive. And that area to the right of that, out towards the river channel, as it indicates, it's set aside to accommodate floodwaters. And there's even the term reserved used sometimes in definition. And the reason for that is, or what that means, is there's much more scrutiny placed on anything you do in that floodway versus the floodplain. So development resiliency, when we think about resiliency, what we've been talking about is you look at the risk of an event and the consequence of an event as a consideration for that. And so, for example, when we look at building pads, and we think about resiliency, and we think about what's the risk of that happening, but what's the consequence? It's a significant consequence, so what we want to do is we want building pads to be at elevations that are much higher. So we want building pads maybe to more approach that 500-year elevation as opposed to just the 100-year elevation, because we know that precipitation is increasing, in particular across Iowa and other parts of the nation. So we don't want to just adhere to just the minimum requirement. I think we want to look at what does it take to get it to a much higher elevation so that that risk drops dramatically. Leverage public and private investments. And you've heard it also talked about prioritizing. So I think it's about looking at how do we prioritize these public investments to help give confidence, if you will, in the ability to develop on areas so that, I think that would really help from a private investment perspective. To relieve and clarify the undue regulatory pressures. So in doing this analysis, we are actually using the FEMA regulatory model, the computer model that the regulators use when we're doing our analysis. So it's not something different. We're using the exact same model. And so in doing so, we're getting confidence that this improvements can be permissible as well. So on the island, there are several segments of roads that are actually below the 100-year flood elevation. And that's significance from a consequence standpoint, because if we have developments, but the roads are flooded and people can't get to it, namely emergency services, that becomes a significant safety and welfare issue. And then buildings that are not elevated above the 100-year flood elevation are typically required to pay flood insurance, and we've heard that that's a significant detriment to development. So some of those improvements that we're looking at are actually raising those areas with fill. So lastly, are the results of our analysis. So the placement of fill within the floodplain, yeah, not the floodway, is permissible and permissible. And I'll say that without environmental considerations. From a floodplain standpoint, we can do that. We've helped the city acquire a couple floodplain fill permits here just recently with the Hinson Trail and Moss Park Lake Pump Station as well. So we know it's permissible. And the second item, the placement of structures, for example, boardwalk north of Highway 151 within the floodway will not create a rise in the base flood elevation. So that floodway, remember, I mentioned it had a lot more scrutiny to it. And what we've done is we've taken this model, we've actually looked at what would be the effect on the flood elevation if we put, say, a boardwalk along there and an observation tower, for example, on the north end of the island. And the results of our analysis show that it has zero rise, which is one of the main criteria to get it permitted to do something in the floodway. So with that, Chris?
Thank you, Mike. So I'll begin the economic analysis with a couple of high-level statements first. I think I would say, you know, right now, sort of summer, fall 2023 is sort of a strategic moment in time, a unique moment. We're beginning to put an end on that bookcase of three years of serious economic volatility that we've all seen, where we can start to talk about next year as actually being the idea of sort of stable growth. Again, higher inflation, but a return to something that we might think about as normalcy. But I think that second point is at the same time thinking about that some of these markets are actually quite different. And the thing we've been trying to do with this study and all of our work over the last two years is understand what was that pre-COVID trend, and are we reverting to it? Or is there a new trend taking its place? So that bifurcation that we're thinking about now, what's changed, what hasn't? I will tell you, in places like Chicago, a ton of people went out for Mother's Day for the first time two months ago that hadn't done it for three years, and there was a major shift in how the city felt. So that notion of things have begun to change, but there's still differences, things we have to keep in mind. So we always start this conversation with Dubuque. Again, I was here back in 2010, talking about the warehouse district. We were here in 2014, talking about Schmidt Island the first time. Slow and steady growth, always something we expect from this community. I think the reality, though, that we've seen here, but also across the country, is residential has not kept pace. Partially, this is an issue of housing that was not built from 2010 to 2015. There is now quite a consequential shortage, and we saw that during COVID where we had this big pivot of people from urban areas to rural areas. The housing inventory couldn't keep up with that, and we saw some big changes. So the question now is, how do we build more housing in general? And then the second policy question is, does Schmidt Island play a role in that question? That's something we can debate tonight. I think, secondly, for us, Schmidt Island is a tourist destination. Unlike other places in this community, it actually does a good job of extending stays. People stay there longer. And what we know about this, the place Dubuque, was we need to attract people from further away, from Chicago, from Madison, from Des Moines, from Cedar Rapids. So our ability to extend stays through more amenities is essential. We also have to recognize those markets are different today. Again, everyone I know, I think, is going to Europe right now. That's the trend. So again, a year from now, things will settle down, and we'll come back to some of our more regular habits. But it means thinking about tourism, sports, tournaments, again, an array of activities. From a retail standpoint, I always say, thank goodness, the retail apocalypse is finished, right? That finally ended. I would also say we're not talking about Bass Pro Shops and Cabela's. I think that trend ended about 10 years ago, too, thank goodness. But we do see the island as a specific opportunity for supporting retail. So appropriately targeted restaurants, supporting retail activities. We do not see it as a destination, but again, in context with the other activities that we see supporting that. So maybe nicer restaurants. Again, we have to balance that with the casino, but not a retail destination in itself, again, competing with other areas. From a residential standpoint, we are seeing a specific market opportunity for what we would say higher-end apartments, so maybe up to 400 units. I think that that number is flexible, because it really boils down to the fact that we have a higher interest rate regime, which is probably encouraging people to rent rather than own. We've seen a shortage of housing, which is encouraging generally more wealthy people to rent rather than own if they can't find a house to buy. So again, there is an opportunity to talk about housing. We'd say that number is citywide. It's also regional. Again, there's a broader shortage of housing that we have to contend with. There are obviously a couple of policy questions about the island that we'll have to run into. One is it's currently not a permitted use. Two, we have the reality of a ground lease situation. So if we're doing mixed-use development on a ground lease for apartments, that's pretty straightforward. We would say that's a minimum 75-year ground lease. It has been done with condominiums. So again, that's something we can think about. It's tricky. It adds some noise to a potential transaction, but it is possible. Ultimately, though, we would say about apartments is we want to align the product with a set of amenities that will encourage people to go there. So thinking about apartments or housing tied to the marina, rather than just a standalone residential product, is something that we're talking about with the planning team. Again, aligned with the marina as opposed to just in isolation on the island. Last but not least, and I think there's an interesting parallel between residential and office. Hybrid is here to stay, although I would argue, pre-COVID, no one was coming in on Fridays anyways. It's a secret, but I think we all know it in many ways. But the reality is that now we're talking about a need to think about older office buildings. So buildings built in the 80s, 90s, if anyone remembers Resolution Trust Corporation. We built a lot of office space in that 10-year period. All of that space is going to get talked about in the next 10 years, one way or another. COVID has accelerated the conversation. So we do see a lot of cities thinking about old office buildings as a solution for residential. But it is a broader question that's much bigger than our study. We would not say in the short term that office is a very likely use, but we will say eventually, beyond three years, we do think office will return to the table. But smaller, more targeted, it'll be a different type of building than what we would have seen 20 years ago. And my last point on the residential piece is, pre-COVID, we would have not talked about remote workers at all. And that is now a number, and it is a trend, and it means that we have to think about residential projects as having a share of employees in them, which is not something we would have thought about pre-COVID. So again, there's a job implication associated with new residential projects that's different. So I guess from a regional standpoint, the city of Dubuque, Dubuque County benefited during COVID, picked up residents at a faster rate. I think the reality, though, is that broader trade area is doing about what you would have expected. It's slow and steady at best, probably stable. So again, this real challenge and the question of Schmidt Island is how do we extend stays for people that are coming from further away? So how do we grow visitation from, say, Chicago, Minneapolis? I always remember our work in Traverse City, Michigan, where we pointed out that Chicago was a 45-minute plane flight away. So again, how do we diversify these markets? How do we think about our advertising framework in these markets and attract people in? Schmidt Island plays a huge role in extending stays. That's what we think about. The Work from Home piece, again, consequential. From our perspective, those people effectively doubled, so almost 10%. We have our general view about pure remote workers, that they are expecting different sets of amenities. So again, quality of life, open space, trail systems, again, factors we wouldn't have thought about as prioritizing pre-COVID. Now we have a tier of new workers that we have to think about differently in terms of their needs. Again, median household income, I think the thing we've always seen with city of Dubuque and Dubuque County is relatively biased, balanced, relatively affluent, particularly compared to places like Rockford. So again, understanding how that different mix of employment across Dubuque that we see, greater focus on manufacturing, generally higher wages. How do we translate that into demand for different kinds of housing? But ultimately, how does a place like Schmidt Island also help from terms of residence, giving them a set of amenities that they expect to benefit from? And then from an employment standpoint, I guess we've always appreciated Dubuque. This is looking at location quotient, city and county for 2022. So again, strength, manufacturing, education, finance, and insurance, arts and education, all strong. I think the one that surprised me, retail trade, again, only slightly positive. So again, thinking about a targeted set of uses that can improve upon that. So how do we extract a little bit more money from people that are coming to these locations from outside of town? But again, tells us a story about relative strength, but also areas like accommodation and food services relatively weak. So again, thinking about a targeted set of activities that can grow that market and make it, you know, slightly better than once. So again, pulling dollars in rather than just maintaining our resident base. I guess the two charts I'll spend the most time on, pre-COVID, we didn't talk about cell phone data. And I think the good news is most people don't have two cell phones anymore, so I think we've solved that problem. But the cell phone days, that data tells us a very interesting story about specific destinations and how they've changed over the last three years, and also this notion of recovery and what that looks like. So we have the Kennedy Mall to the left, obviously the biggest destination by far. We have downtown Millwork, Schmidt Island, downtown Dubuque, and the Port of Dubuque. And I think the key point is you're seeing different rates of recovery. Obviously, the mall is back to where it was. But the other locations, Millworking, again, up higher than where it was pre-COVID. So again, one of the few areas that's doing better than it was. But also Schmidt Island leveling off, but again, holding its own versus, say, downtown Dubuque, Port of Dubuque, they look a little different. They're lagging behind a little bit in terms of recovery from COVID. So again, thinking about these visitation numbers, the second thing we did was look at length of stay. So we have the same locations, all color-coded. Schmidt Island is in the light gray, and we have our destination, so under 30 minutes, and then at the far, greater than 150 minutes. And what you see, of course, is that Schmidt Island pops as probably the second-longest length of stay of all the places. And it tells us something about the types of uses that are going to reinforce that, not weaken it. So what are those uses that can help us extend stays? Again, the longer we get a visitor to stay, if we can add a day to that trip, two days to a trip, means they're more likely to drive from more than three hours away. So how can we get it from a two-day trip to a three-day? Those sorts of things start to inform a strategy for what happens with the island in the future. And again, tourism, again, thinking about visitor origins. Again, where are we seeing visitors coming from today? We know this pattern is going to change a lot in the next two years, so it's something we have to pay attention to. And then I think just overall visitation, again, based on cell phone data, it would suggest that 2022 was down slightly. So again, curious to see what 2023 looks like. I think a lot of people were involved in revenge tourism, so they went back on that trip that they wanted to do in 2019. So again, we would expect to see recovery there, but we would also say that I would not want to be accidental about that. So there's a marketing strategy that reintroduces people, but also it drives the set of amenity conversations about the island as well. And then last but not least, on real estate, again, our goal here is to understand these different markets, their strengths, what's going on. I think the one thing I would comment on is industrial has probably been the strongest market in the Midwest for 10 years now. I'm not sure that's an appropriate conversation for the island at all, but it's, again, the reality of the Midwest and what it's probably going to be better at in the future, which is advanced manufacturing. So again, Schmidt Island, probably not the right place for that, but a difference that we might expect post-COVID. But for us, really thinking about residential and retail is maybe some of the framing elements for what might happen on this island in the future.
Thank you, Chris. And to wrap up here, so the work that Strand and Mike are working on to help us define where it's permissible, where we can do permissible activities, along with what the market is suggesting based on now and over the next six months or so, we've started to put together a program, a series of uses that we believe would be appropriate for the island. Our next steps, which we'll get to here, is to figure out exactly how these pieces to come together, based on your feedback tonight. And so with that, we'll walk through those. From a living standpoint, we do believe that there is an opportunity here to have, you know, at the higher end of what Dubuque can support. We have, why? A, we have to think about the geotechnical considerations of working on the island, so it's not raw farmland that you can quickly convert, put in a typical foundation. We have to think about that, along with how do we manage and elevate above the floodplain and then other environmental considerations. And so with that, you kind of already start at a little bit of a higher price point, and so we have to factor that in. To support that, this, the idea of the amenities that come with that, and you'll see some of those proposed public improvements that we've been thinking through here. Second to that, and perhaps this will make a bit more sense in a moment when we talk about an expansion of the ICE Center. We have been looking at that, and many of you saw the news regarding the University of Dubuque and their partnership. Depending on how that progresses, we see an opportunity for youth sports and for competitive tournament play, hockey, that could be housed on the island. And when you bring that use in, along with what could potentially take place in the summer on the ballfield sites, whether it be local recreation or actually tournament play hosted by local colleges, you start to set the need for, you identify a need for another hotel on the island. I recognize that a beautiful one is being built now, but this isn't a plan for next year. This is a plan for the next 20 years. And so where that goes and when the market suggests we're ready for it, we want to make sure that we know how many rooms we need, how many square foot the building is, or how big it is, so that we can calculate a cost for it. So ultimately, we know if we have the right infrastructure, if we have the appropriate amount of fill to prepare the pad site and so forth. So we want to make sure that what we are proposing to you here is actionable, buildable, with clear costs, clear priorities, I think, that Alex mentioned early on. Prominades along, the potential along the river, tree-lined, having unique views to the water. We talked, this is a precedent study. You can see here on the right-hand side this beacon. If you can imagine, as you pull into Schmidt Island, potentially on the Catfish Charlie side of the ICE Center, we look at a pre-engineered middle building that has this great luminescence to it that isn't a tractor that you immediately see. If that was something that the market supports based on our further evaluation, how big would it need to be and what would it cost? And so that's why you see spreadsheets here, is we want to make sure that we assign values to those so that we know if we can afford it and if it will work. We talked about entertainment being a use, so if we're next to an expanded ICE Center, potentially there's other amenities that an operator could help spearhead, like climbing towers, potentially outdoor ice rinks that attract visitors within the shoulder seasons and throughout the prime visitation season. We want to leverage the investment so that the building is being used 365 days of the year, not just during those peak events of when hockey is in session, or if there's, ultimately, if the ballfields, you know, host tournament play. A skating ribbon, many of you have probably seen those. This is one of the intriguing ideas that we believe has some great potential and could be more of an operational component versus just a, you know, potentially a standalone capital improvement where it has to be a brewery. probably seen those. This is one of the intriguing ideas that we believe has some great potential and could be more of an operational component versus just a, you know, potentially a standalone capital improvement where it has to be a brewery. But if you've been to Surly in Minnesota, or even New Glarus over in Wisconsin, or Big Grove, you've likely experienced this eatery entertainment, this destination that people drive aways for. And it doesn't have to be necessarily a brewery, but you are going to attract people from the region to come here. But there's many people, and probably quite a few in this room, that would really appreciate having that amenity here. So my point in sharing that is, we're not looking at improvements that just cater to tourism. Equally as important is improving the quality of life for the residents of Dubuque. Opportunities for potentially brews and barks, having your dog with you while you socialize. How can we get boats on the water? What if there's this series of water taxis? You could go from down by the mines of Spain to the ice harbor, to the north port. You could come up here, you could go to the yardarm, you could go up to Lock and Dam, and potentially there's this circuit. And so where do they come? We're not talking the Viking cruise ships by any means, but we are talking about small personal watercraft or potentially a concessionaire operating those. This layer of the natural amenity on the island, how can we leverage that? How can this become an outpost for potentially education, laboratory space, partnerships with local institutions? Where could that go? Imagine yoga in the trees as you're looking out over the Mississippi as the barges go by. Those are all opportunities that would benefit both people who live here and people who would be coming here from a tourism standpoint. We've talked a little bit in the past about this observation tower on the north end, one of the most beautiful views in Dubuque, the boardwalk, an amphitheater, and then destination play that really people will drive here for. And so we don't have it solved. Not all of these opportunities here will likely make it into plan, depending on the financial feasibility. So we are dreaming a bit right now. So, but we do, you know, welcome your feedback here during the Q and A, if you have questions about some of these amenities that have been noted here. So I'm going to wrap up with the next steps, and then I'll turn it back over to Alex here to facilitate discussion. So Chris mentioned, gave us a snapshot of what the market is suggesting right now. We're going to test this program, both the capital cost, the operating cost, to verify that what we are proposing is ultimately, right now, the highest and best use for that real estate. Secondly, we'll look at the development impacts. We've actually had early conversations with some of the city staff. The infrastructure in the island is very good in terms of, you know, do we have enough sanitary sewer capacity? Do we have the ability to support development from a fire suppression standpoint? Is the volume of water there for that? And the thumbs up so far on that. So that's great news. We will then prepare the development plan, look at a set of costs, and then ultimately, with your guidance, create a set of actionable priorities that complement the vision that was shared earlier. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Alex, and we would welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ryan. I appreciate, again, the work that has been going into this. And so a couple of things I want to just help to then facilitate discussion, dialogue, Q and A about everything, is really just to talk through kind of, okay, well, how would we pay for any and all of this, right? So a lot of different images, a lot of different things that DRA is leading, but as it relates to Schmidt Island, I'll just give a couple of examples. So the DRA board, a number of years ago, did a phenomenal job at wanting to jumpstart this program and move forward with the Veterans Memorial. So that Veterans Memorial was privately funded by the DRA by getting a loan from our good friend here at Midwest One, and we were able to move forward. That's about $4 million a year. We spend, Brian, about $442,000 a year in principal and interest payments, paying on that loan. We have a couple of years still left, about five to six years left of making those principal and interest payments. But once we fully pay that off, that will then free up money that will, is no longer being used by this one-third of profits, that could go to fund some of these projects. So again, if we said there's a new improvements to the ballpark, or new improvements to the walking trails, or new improvements to the ice center, once you pay off, let's say, some debt, and you're still providing about $1 million, which is about a third of the profits that would go into a Schmidt Island development fund, it would enable us to be able to pick one of these projects and say, either the city of Dubuque could issue a bond like it is doing for the amphitheater that the DRA pay for, or we as the DRA could issue debt and pay that from that one-third of profits. So before, we had a lot of good ideas. We had this plan, but there wasn't a dedicated revenue stream to be able to enact things. Now we have a dedicated revenue stream, and now it's going to be important for us to be able to say, if a million dollars is going into the Schmidt Island fund every year for the next 32 years, what project should we do? So we've already now committed to one of them. One of those is the amphitheater project. And so to give you an example is, again, we were able to take, again, one-third of those profits, we were able to keep it into a bank account. When the Destination Iowa grant came about, we partnered together and say, let's go after this amphitheater. It's going to cost about $15 million. How can we pay for it? Well, the state of Iowa said that here, we'll give you $3 million if you can then leverage the remaining in order to be able to move forward. This council was very gracious to issue a general, to agree to issue a general obligation bond that we, the DRA, would pay. That's going to be about $666,000 a year. So of that million dollars, and we've already paid, are already paying for the, for the Veterans Memorial, but of that million dollars, and if we then pay a note of about $600-plus thousand a year, we're going to have something remaining in order to fund projects. So there's already money that we can, if we were to issue, whether it's a bond or even privately issued debt, in order to advance some of these projects, we have the funds and the mechanism and then the ability to do some, not all of these. So that's direct investment that we, through partnership, could be able to move forward with. And so this isn't pie in the sky. What we need from you all is the, hey, what do you want? You tell us what you want. We will put together both the financing package, as well as a plan to be able to move forward. Separate of these things, there may be things that you want, that we as the city, or even as the DRA, cannot take on our own, and we would need to be able to partner with the private sector. So again, this is to be able to say, these are the elements that we would want, and is there an ability for us to issue, let's say, an RFP, where a private sector group could come in and do some of, whether it's the programmatic things, or to do some of the physical infrastructure things? So to use a prime example, a water taxi. We, as a city and DRA, could partner together to say, we would like a third party to come in and provide a water taxi that could take you from the yardarm to Schmidt Island, over to the marina. But if we just say, this is what we want, and this is what, how we could partner, and these are the parameters that we would want a private sector group to go either buy a boat or get something philanthropically, we can do it. And so I think this process, at least for me and the rest of our team, has been very encouraging, because from the work that we saw from Mike, as it relates to the floodplain, is this became much less daunting to do development, once you study and understand where the water comes and where it doesn't. And as a result of this, our private development led by DRA, what we're doing is consolidating our development onto those spaces that are within that 500-year floodplain, right? So that's at a core of what we're doing. Some other elements that are outlining, we then are being able to say, hey, if we have some fill, if we engage DNR, we can make improvements. What we didn't talk a lot about was the IMPACT 7G study, was about the foliage and really the trees and all the things that happen on the island. I think for a very long time, we felt we were hamstrung about our ability to go out and help make some of these areas nicer, or to landscape them. But ultimately, what we learned is, as long as we partner with DNR, as long as we partner with the different agencies, we can really have a proactive approach about how the look and feel of this area can be. And then as it relates to ACOM and economic studies that we are able to go in for there, really having a good understanding of what today's market, let's say, implies, then says, if we want to have residential on the island, there's just a couple of policy things that we're going to have to do. And one of those is to be able to entertain this concept of having a long-term lease. That is, you know, it's a big deal, and it's not going to happen overnight. But the one ask of this body would be, is to help us figure out a way that we can work through that, so that we, as a community, could get comfortable, to be able to move forward with some type of high-end residential on an island overlooking the river. We think there's a demand for it, and we could do it. I'll last point out an example of the ballfields. So from previously, and I'll go all the way back, in the very beginning of this presentation, we have a couple of the scenarios right here. So this is a map going back in 2014, 2017, and 2022. So this first map here, which outlines in the master plan, it includes, rightfully so, a number of options where this, for the ballfields. So you've got existing ballfields there, Loris College plays on them, Waller plays on them, a number of, you know, adult leagues play on them. And we have, rightfully so, a number of options. Option one, housing. Option two, retail. And there's another option that has maybe a potential minor league park and other retail and office space. In order, though, to move forward, this group, this body, and us collectively as a community, we have to eventually say, this is what we want. If we want to have ballfields, then let's commit. And if we want to have ballfields that are nice, it costs money. If we say, hey, we would want to relocate ballfields to another place in order to bring in commercial development, we need to state that so that we can move forward. We don't need that answer tonight, but I think this is, we're reaching the point where we have to start placing orders for what we want either the city, the DRA, or the private sector to do. And then, once we have that conviction, we, as a community, can move forward and build what we want to happen. But if we continue to have too many options or too many priorities, nothing moves forward, and that's the difference of why we're here tonight. And so I'm so grateful and so excited, because we've got a great collection of private sector consultants, we've got a great collection of not only you as city council, but our relationship with the staff is just, is unparalleled. And so with that, I'd like to just open it up for questions, comments, concerns, and really, any number of the team here can move forward to provide the appropriate responses. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much, Alex, and everybody who was able to present. Thank you very much for all this information. It's a lot. I mean, it's a whole lot to swallow in an hour. So we're going to probably have some questions for you, so that's good. But it was actually really helpful to see some of this and think through some of these ideas. I'm going to kick us off, and then I'll open it up to the rest of the council for questions. Because I want to make sure that we're all centered in the same place. And I mean us up here, but then also the entire community, because we're kind of talking about two different things. And I want to, I want to make that clear in my own head and for everybody else. The first thing we're talking about is what's happening now, what's proposed now, and what's coming at us as a council, and then to the community as far as proposals in the next month. And then the next question is, then the other piece of it is, what are we dreaming about still? What are the other pieces that we can add on to this, what's occurring right now? If I'm, if I'm clear on what we're talking about as far as now, that was Stacy's presentation, correct? So we've got the casino update, redevelopment there, both inside and out. We have the new hotel. We have entertainment and things that are added on to there. We have the amphitheater that we're talking about. And you mentioned hike bike trails. And then, I believe that's, did I cover everything? Okay. So that's, that's what's going on right now. The proposals that are coming to this council in the next month from the DRA are going to be related to those developments.
Yes. Yeah, we're working through the, the timing. Ultimately, the city council will be asked to approve specific loan agreements that we will be party to with Midwest One, the city council, as well as the DRA. And all those projects are what is contemplated, privately funded, that just because of our unique relationship, the city council has to approve all debt agreements or debt issuances. And so there'll be loan agreements, subordination agreements, environmental agreements, as well as, as well as an update to our lease, that all comes together in one package that enables us to privately finance that activity, and we're also the races.
Correct. Yeah, great. And still, all very, very exciting. I mean, the things that we're looking at in the more immediate future. But that is the more immediate future. So I want to make that really clear for everybody, so we're all on the same page with that. And then the other, all the other fun things you pointed out, all the slides that Ryan and the team went through, are all the things that we're still thinking about. What's off in the future potentially? Where might we go? And as this council thinks about it now and makes more goals and priorities down the line, could be thinking about some of these things potentially?
That's absolutely right, because it'll help us prioritize the one-third of profits that go to Schmidt Island. So if there's a project that we need to save money for, that we save it appropriately. If there's something that we want to move forward quickly, that we go and deploy it. And that's, that's exactly right.
All right. Great. Well, that gives us the lay of the land, then, so we kind of understand where we're at. So I'll go ahead and open it up for any questions. Ms. Wethel?
I know it's an elevator speech that you can do. So I would like, just for anyone watching in the community, for citizens to understand how the DRA has benefited our tax base and taxation of our citizens.
No, it's a great question. So we were very fortunate, literally, in, in the mid-'80s, '84, '85, when this, when this community was faced with very high record unemployment, the community rallied around and said, we have to do something different to make sure that our economy can keep going. And so the citizens of Dubuque really got together, created an organization, the Dubuque Racing Association, and went out with a referendum for the city of Dubuque to raise $7 million to build a Greyhound race facility. And so that facility then was able to help bring in, literally, hundreds, if not millions of people from around the surrounding area. And the funds and the proceeds from that Greyhound racing facility were first to be able to use to pay back that debt. But then, that 501(c)(4) organization that was created, that's still in place today, we were able to split those profits between the city of Dubuque, 50%, and charities, 50%. Later on, later on, when we then added slot machines and gaming, we were able to then move into the Mystique, as well as now here to Q Casino. So today, we are able to take one-third of the profits from Q Casino. One-third goes, one-third of the profits goes directly into the general fund of the city of Dubuque. One-third of those profits now go to the Schmidt Island development that we're talking, and one-third of those profits go to our charities, which we learned about this week, again, with the funds that go out. If we think of that split, it's about a little over $1 million go to charity, a little over $1 million goes into to the city's general operating budget from the profits, and one-third now going to Schmidt Island. In addition to that one-third of profits that goes to the city, the DRA and the city of Dubuque enter into a lease agreement on this land, and we provide, it's 1.5% of our coin in, which is close to about, a little under 15% of our revenues that come into the DRA, go directly into the city's general operating, general fund throughout the course of the year. Last year, that totaled about a little over $9 million. And we were very fortunate to, you know, to present the check with the Diamond Joe alongside the Q. And then that goes into that general fund, which, on average, is close to maybe about, you know, $80 million a year. And that is what is used to set property taxes that, you know, moves out. There's other funds, whether sewage, water, a number of other funds, capital funds, but the general fund is primarily where our funds kind of go. So long-winded answer, but hopefully that gives you a context of where the money comes from, where it goes, and how it benefits the city of Dubuque.
Thank you. I do think it's important for us all to hear that. I know, as I started in my role as city council, I had a better understanding of that relationship and what it has offered the taxpayers of Dubuque, which is phenomenal. The ability for us to have our tax rates is, is a very close relationship with the DRA and what you have offered us. And so in a way, what I want to tie in is that what has been an investment thus far will only be an investment further for our citizens, but we have to make it work. We have to do our, the best we can to make that investment what it, the best it can be. So, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Barber?
Speaking of economic analysis, and I want to thank Chris for his remarks about the economy and the market taking on a more stable growth post-COVID and the quasi-recession pandemic. potential or not, but looking forward to '24 and beyond, which I think is really good for our planning, and also will help Dubuque kind of expand its economic growth as well. So I think that parallels even what some of what Moody's has said. And I wanted to go to the vision that you had about your high-end apartments. And you did mention, and I know it's not going to be Hampton-style, if you will, in New York Island, but it seems like it'll be very upscale and have a different group that it will attract for housing. And you had mentioned public-private partnerships. Do you have an idea of how this would be moving forward? If you did, and if we came to the agreement that this indeed was a priority for a unique residential area in that space?
No, it's a great question. And part of what we're working through is exactly on the island, where, let's say, would be the best positioning for it. But this is a scenario that I think it's important just to be able to talk openly about how something like this could work. As you saw, there are some challenged areas on the island. This, at one point, literally for our grandparents' generation, was whether it's the airport or the city dump. This is not your traditional area that has curbs, gutters, lights, all the infrastructure that a normal, let's say, residential development, let's say, has. So there'd be quite a bit of things, you know, we're talking about a lot of the great items that are here. There are some very basic, let's just say, kind of city infrastructure that we are partnering with the city actively on to make sure that there are sidewalks, curbs, gutters, streetlights, trash is able to get in and out, emergency vehicles are able to do that. So if you imagine that, okay, hey, those baseline things happen, but all of this discussion about, okay, well, who should pay for that? Will have to, let's say, be, you know, discussed another day. But there's a scenario where, you know, we've got this land, which, right now, the DRA is a leasehold provider. You know, we are a 501(c)(4) organization. We don't pay federal tax on the profits that we generate. The land that you all own, we could enter into some type of an agreement where the land is contributed, and there is some form of a private partner who could come in and say, to help develop a physical, let's call it apartment. But in exchange for a lot of that infrastructure that we talked about, you could contribute the land at a very low rate, in exchange for them putting up the capital that would need to be improved in order to provide the high-end housing, or just housing. We say high-end, but ultimately, it's, we see all over the country, there next to the waterfront, they're being housing developed. And so, to that end is, there's a scenario where you could contribute land to an entity at a low rate, have an outside developer provide private capital, that allows them to be able to build things at a rate that could be affordable to people to be able to move in.
Right. The question I have in parallel would be the services. So in other words, is it just going to be housing, or is there going to be a grocery store? Is there going to be a laundromat? Is there going to be, you know, just the services that one normally looks at in quote-unquote neighborhoods, if you will, besides just the housing? And how would that? I know it's a future vision, but it's just a point of discussion for future potentially here.
Well, it's very relevant as we think about, part of what Ryan and RDG is going through is as you spend more time within each of these, within each of these areas, and there'll be even further development. What you start to see on some of these Excel spreadsheets are an actual program. So if you said, if we were to move forward, and I'll just show the images, if we were to move forward, let's say, with some type of housing, could there be a small grocery store? Could there be a small, let's say, even other elements that would help to, you know, kind of complement a residential type of program? These are the dialogues that we want to bring you, say, a proposal. You say, hey, I like that, I don't like this, let's add that. And then, at the end of it, we have a program that says, okay, we could have X number of units with Y number of other, you know, first floor commercial. We would want to have improvements to parking lots, lighting, all these other things, and here's how much it costs. Here's how it costs to build a structure, but then here's how much it costs to do, let's say, the infrastructure. And then you say, okay, well, who's going to pay for that? And then you have to say, hey, would the city like to invest that? Or would we want the private developer to pay for that? Then, you'd enter into a development agreement with a private developer. Because if we are able to say, let's say, over the course of the next six months to a year, to say, if a private group came in and built this, these are the terms that this body would agree to, that enables, let's say, us or anyone else to go out to a private developer, most likely right here in our backyard, to say, if you go raise $100 million to build these apartments and offer this and offer that, and put in the infrastructure we need to, this is the deal that the city council, let's say, would be comfortable with. If we're able to do that in advance, it takes out a lot of the guesswork for a private developer to say, hey, what would you want to do?
Well, I applaud the vision, and I also very much enjoyed hearing about the fact that it would be close to amenities, so that they would have some recreational amenities tied into this, as well as just to be living there. So thank you very much. I appreciate the vision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. Building on the mayor's remarks and Ms. Wethel's, I think we got into weeds really very quickly, and I appreciate the many details. There are a lot of citizens who are going to be very interested in, in what we're doing here. And I don't want to forget them. They're all, they're here with us. And I hope that we could talk about a little bit the special relationship we have with the Q Casino, DRA. We own, you know, we own, the citizens own that facility. And now, we talked about some of the financial aspects, but now you're reaching out to get into the more lifestyle, things to make our living here on the masterpiece of the Mississippi even better. You're reaching out to the veterans. You're reaching out to the people who would love wildlife and activities. But, you know, and you're a wonderful spokesman. And we also have, besides the mayor, Mr. Van Milligan, who always talks to us about how important to the citizens of Dubuque, not just financial, but, you know, the special relationships we've had since the very beginning. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Van Milligan, could you give our citizens, and I wish it was on, I looked at the brochure and it's wonderful, but it doesn't give that first high-end, first page, you know, this is our area. And not only does it help us financially, but it helps us be, just have a high standard of living here. And it's important to every citizen of Dubuque. Would you mind giving a few comments on that?
Yeah, well, thank you very much. First of all, Alex, as always, tremendous presentation. And as Alex says, and as the council's very aware, we've been working very closely for months to end up at this point in time. And as City Attorney Krenna Brumwale reported Monday night at our Economic Development Work Session, about the numbers of hours, 30 hours, that the mayor and city council have spent in closed session over the last year, talking about projects just like this. And as a matter of fact, this probably might be the one that might have dominated the most amount of time. So with our bottom line being, and, well, let me start out with how our conversation started. When Alex came here now, I don't know, 20 months ago, maybe? Was Alex talked about, okay, now it's time to start implementing the Schmidt Island Master Plan, which the council originally adopted in 2014. And of course, the council was very supportive of that. And so, what we did is, we sat down and said, okay, let's start out the conversation with, what do both parties need to end up with at the end? And if we start with those understandings at the beginning of the conversation, we'll find a path to get there. And that's exactly what happened. And so, one of the things the mayor and council knows that we need is the effort to create an equitable community of choice, which means it's a really broad tent. And so, that's one of the things we've kept in mind in all these discussions. So, for instance, that what Alex talks about, the hike bike trails that are going to be throughout this, anybody can go there, anytime, you don't have to spend a nickel, and you can enjoy Schmidt Island and everything that's going to be created there. But then, there's more. So what if you're seeking out entertainment opportunities? So you'll have a place to go and have greater experience for entertainment opportunities. And as Alex has described, the way the existing facilities exist, it's, since there's slot machines everywhere, you can't bring anybody under 21 years old into that building. And so, if you want to go with your family and have a enjoyable experience, you can't have any of the family member that's under 21. So the plan the DRA has come up with is to split the building. So you have this entertainment zone that now, once again, this creating equitable community of choice, this massive investment, which will be a partnership between the DRA and the city of Dubuque, now brings more people into the ability to enjoy that. And it's not just gaming, but gaming will still be a really important part of it. And then you talk about, you know, they have the existing Grand Harvard Hotel, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong, the existing Hilton Hotel. And quite frankly, it has some of the highest occupancy rates in our community. And of course, it's in a great place. It's a fabulous facility that every three to five years, they sink several million dollars into to keep it refreshed. And of course, it's also on the Hilton Honors Program, which means if you're a traveler and you go all over the country, and you're a Hilton Honors member, you want to stay at a Hilton Honors Hotel when you come to Dubuque, because you earn points. So it's one of the highest occupancy hotels that we have. Well, we know from the Field of Dreams Project feasibility study, that when that $135 million project is done, it's going to generate 61,000 hotel rooms a year. We're going to need more hotel space. And my gosh, this hotel is going to be something, well, as it's said in the brochure, that will be the crown jewel of this redevelopment. And so, once again, as we try and create an equitable community of choice, we're going to have more opportunities for people to experience the island, not just the existing hotel, but the new hotel. And I don't know how much it was stressed in this, but there's also going to be much more convention and meeting spaces part of this whole program. So it's also going to be tremendous asset for our businesses. So not only can they bring their customers and bring them to this beautiful place, but they can have meetings there, they can have dinners there, they can bring their employee, or annual employee events there. The not-for-profits can, will have a place to, you know, have that experience. So, you know, as Alex did so, a good job of explaining, you know, in the 1980s, when the citizens passed that $7 million referendum and said, hey, if this doesn't work, we'll pay the debt. We'll pay it out of our property taxes. And we get, it'll cost us more money, but we're willing to take the chance. Well, they never had to pay a nickel back, because the DRA paid it all back. But just like anybody else, when you're the one that takes the original risk, like our 58,000 citizens did, you get the benefit. And you get it basically permanently. And so, Alex has explained how we've created this mutually beneficial relationship through our lease, where we get the one and a half percent of the coin in, and then a third of the profits that are left at the end. But at the same time, the charities get a third of the profits at the end. So they're going to benefit. And I don't know if this was stressed enough in this presentation, but things are going really well now at the Q Casino, in the DRA, and in the city, a lot of great development. But things don't stay static. And so, I just read in the Cedar Rapids paper today, that the, the party, private party that wants to develop a casino in Cedar Rapids, is looking at getting an option on a piece of property. Because they're convinced at the end of the two-year moratorium, that they're going to get a casino license and build a casino in Cedar Rapids. We already know that there's a new casino being built in Rockford for several hundred million dollars. And so, as those, that regional competition starts to intensify, if we just try and accept what we have today, there's, I think, probably, Alex could show you a chart that shows our profitability going down. Not going away, but going down. And if we take these projects that are being proposed today, make that investment, then it'll be the opposite. We'll stay competitive. And the nice thing is, all the, the scenarios that Alex has showed, Krenna and I, throughout these processes, to do all these things and afford them, he's not assuming business is going to go like this. He's assuming all this investment is going to maintain existing business. Well, I appreciate that conservative look at the financials, but I don't believe that's what's going to happen. I believe it's going to go like this. Because you're going to, you're going to create this entertainment Mecca that's going to draw all kinds of people that just aren't drawn today. And the beauty of it is, between the Diamond Joe, who's our DRA partner, and the beautiful facility they have, will continue to be, and probably will be more so, a regional draw for gamers. That'll benefit them, just like it benefits the Q Casino. It kind of reminds me of when Viking Cruise Lines contacted us about five years ago and said, hey, we're going to build a $300 million boat, and we're going to start floating it on the Mississippi River. And of course, they're an international river cruise giant. And they said, you know, you might think that the other river cruise lines are going to be upset that we're coming. They said, that's not what's going to happen. It's going to be the exact opposite. Because we are a marketing powerhouse on an international basis, and everybody's going to win. Well, you know what's happened since then? The American Cruise Lines has built three new boats. So it's exactly what Viking said was going to happen. And that's what will happen here, is between the Diamond Joe and this entertainment complex on Schmidt Island, we're going to grow the market. It's not going to be us against the Diamond Joe, or the Diamond Joe against the Q Casino. So what ends up happening is, that investment, that, that risk and investment the taxpayers took in the 1980s, is going to just continue to have a massive amount of return for this, our community. And so, I have to tell you this little story. So, May 31st, Debbie Durham, the head of the Iowa Economic Development Authority, came to Dubuque, and she made a presentation to about 300 people at the Grand River Center. And after the presentation, I saw that Alex was in the audience, so, and he was one of the sponsors, by the way, DRA. And I brought him up to, I said, because, because I know Debbie, because I'm on the Board of Directors of the Iowa Finance Authority, so I know her very well. So I said, come on, Alex, I want to bring you up and introduce you to Debbie Durham. And the way I introduced him is, I said, Debbie, this is the Jeff Bezos, this is the Steve Jobs of Dubuque, Iowa. And let me tell you, I really believe that. And I think he's going to make a huge difference, and the DRA is going to make a huge difference. And I don't know if I answered your question, but I hope I did.
I think you did. And I think, and it's a real testament to Mr. Dixon and your entire staff. Look at the, all these people coming up here. You surround yourself with excellence, and that's how we just get better. Did you want to add something? I have two specific questions.
I did. First, I want to thank Mike. I appreciate the sentiment in getting here. And it's really indicative of, the last two years, we've been pushing a boulder uphill, and we're getting to that top of the mountain. And when we approved the loan agreement, it's really going to be managing it downhill and almost managing growth. You know, managing the growing pains of taking on new debt, of issuing it, of project management. But up until this point, it's really been kind of the coordination between, you know, our organizations to get the documents ready to kind of go and move forward. And so, we wanted to have the team here in place, because really, this is the team who's going to, you know, build it and operate it. We've got the banks, we've got, you know, all of our consultants, Conlon Construction, who's teed up. And once we deliver them a set of plans, they're going to go off to the races and build it. And that's the exciting piece. And so, what we're talking about now is really to be able to say, hey, look, once we check that box of getting this approved, we have to, as an organization, be prepared of, let's say, moving forward. And I think going back to your question, Councilman Resnick, is we need your help. You know, we need your help to do just what you described, is to channel the citizens that you represent to, so that you represent to, so that when we come to you, you have your finger on the pulse of what they want, so you tell us what to go build. And so I think to that end, is as we look at these presentations, this is an opportunity, now that we've gotten, gone forward, is to help us figure out, what is the mechanism to channel the citizens' feedback, so that we can get that to Ryan, we can get that to Brian Rakestraw, we can get that to the rest of our team, so that we know what we want to go through. People think about, who are the shareholders of our facility? It's really the people of Dubuque. You know, you are the Board of Directors of the shareholders for a great casino. We have our separate Board of Directors of the DRA, who holds the license and all these other things. But you are the vehicles to channel the feedback. And so to move this forward, it has relatively little to do with me and everything to do with you and the people of saying what you want. Because once you say what you want, the team here, these are the ones who go and operate and go build it and get it done. And so I think as we have RDG on the hook for the next six months, the challenge here is to, how do you tell us what you want, so that we get it into a document that you then approve, so that we go and turn it off to this group to go build? Hopefully that helps pull it together.
Great, thank you very much. Two quick, specific questions. So you talked about housing and you're looking for a little feedback. Of course, we all know housing is so determined, you know, by location. So I'm looking at that island and now you brought up the softball diamonds, and I played down there for like 20 years, slow pitch, of course. And, you know, the softball diamonds south of the college field face out into a beautiful location into the Mississippi. And I don't know, I don't like to have, you know, competing interests, but that seems like if you were going to think about a spot for that, it's away from the hubbub and all the broiling activity that you're going to be having there. It's a place to live, enjoy the Mississippi, and then you have also entertainment and other activities right there. Now, as far as, you talked about highest good. And when it was, after it was the junkyard, baseball diamonds were probably the highest good. And my own opinion is that we do have other land, if we would like to expand our softball offerings, then maybe that could be another place. Though that's, since you asked for it, my input. And finally, a gentleman talked about attracting people from far away and they're talking about Chicago and Minneapolis. And actually, as soon as I heard that Dubuque had a flight to Las Vegas, I was thinking that could be a win-win, actually. And that we could, you know, with this regional feel that we have here and all these activities and a pretty cheap flight, that we might, you know, we might have a little back and forth there. Have you thought about the possibilities? Does it seem like that it's going to be a win for us?
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it, it will be. If you just think of this, is within the last literally six months, the cities of Orlando, Las Vegas and Dubuque are spoken in the same sentence. There's 40 million people who, let's say, fly into Las Vegas, there's 3 million people who live there with an MSA, it's my hometown. But there are people, if they knew that they could come to the Field of Dreams, go to Galena, go to Southwest Wisconsin, hang out in the Millwork District, if we marketed correctly, there are people who will get on that flight and come here, period. And so that is a big reason why, through the DRA, we awarded Travel Dubuque earlier this week, $100,000 to begin the market in those destinations, to have influencers come here, to make sure that people in Madison, in Chicago, in the western suburbs, in Cedar Rapids, know that they can come to Dubuque, hop on a flight and get to Orlando. They will also be able to do that and get out to Las Vegas. And so I shared that early news, I was playing at the, up in Platteville, at the Platteville Chamber of Commerce kind of golf tournament, and people were buzzing. I mean, and so if we think of that, it's, yes, we still need to move forward with getting commercial flights, whether it's directly to Chicago or to some hub, but we need to begin to play up that we are in the tourism business. And if we're in the tourism business, we have to be ready to pounce. And so we need to make these investments and then make sure that we're making the right philanthropic investments that we can get people to come here. And so the thing is, is this is no longer an academic exercise. $80 million is being deployed into Dyersville, right here in Dubuque County, Iowa. We have to begin to develop a sector, no different than later this, later this summer, Brian Rakestraw and Stacy have done a great job. We're going to have the equivalent of 10% of the city of Dubuque's population in the back parking lot on Schmidt Island, watching a great country concert, a Jelly Roll. It's the biggest concert that we've ever had. If we showed you a map of where people have bought tickets from, it's Detroit, Chicago, Minneapolis, all throughout Iowa, and point south to us. We're selling rooms on Schmidt Island that weekend for well north of $450 a night. We need a hotel like tomorrow. And that's going to raise all boats. And so, long-winded answer, but we, the time is now. And this is not about me, this is about we. And because this plan is going to take 32 years to implement, we're just getting started. But I think the point here is to say, we need you as active participants to place orders and we will go execute. And that takes a different level of engagement than a cheerleader or a pat on the back. You know, we need you to help us figure out some really tough questions because we don't have all the answers.
Thank you very much, and, oh, I'm sorry.
I, excuse me, I did want to follow up on that question and your comment there, but so the mayor leads a group called CAS, the Commercial Air Service Task Force, and works closely with efforts to try and expand our air service. Of course, Alex is on it and some other people. But I happen to remember the meeting, and I'm going to mention this because he's in the room. But when we were talking about this idea of, you know, isn't this going to be great for our residents if they can go to Orlando, and that's when Las Vegas wasn't even in the car jet, I guess, is that a pun, in the car jet? And Harley Potoff was in the room and he's the chairperson of the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, he said, hey, that's great for our residents, but he says, let's start talking about that this is a two-way flight. And let's start talking about the people from Orlando that are going to want to come to Dubuque and the baseball players, youth baseball teams that are going to want to play on the Field of Dreams that are in Orlando now. And that really started a conversation that led to, as Alex puts, this $100,000 grant that they've given to Travel Dubuque to say, hey, that's what we want you to do. We want you to figure out how you can get people from Orlando and now people from Las Vegas to say, hey, I want to go to Dubuque. And I got to tell you, I think they got a great strategy. They call them fam tours, they're going to bring in the travel agents and things like that from those areas, and they're going to bring them here in small groups, five to 10 at a time, and give them a three-day tour of Dubuque and show them all the things to do. And they're going to go back and say, hey, we've discovered something that you'd really like to go and enjoy. And I think it's going to work. So I think it was a great idea.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did you get all your questions answered there? It was a good one. Long, long answers with lots of detail, it was very helpful. All right, Ms. Russell.
Thank you. I think what's most exciting is that we have something that's not just for tourism, but it's for us, for quality of life. And these kind of things just don't come along all that, that often. So we have this first phase with the casino and the hotel and trails, and the future is just so exciting. And at what point would we, or how would we reach out to our citizens to get their feedback on this, on those possibilities for the future? Would we just ask them to contact us by email or would we be looking at some kind of a more formal kind of process or, and that may be down the road a bit, but that part is always really important to me, you know, including the citizens on those decisions.
No, it's great. And I asked Kathy to come up, who's the Director of not only Strategic Philanthropy, not speaking, but, no, you absolutely can, but the answer to your question is, you know, I would look towards Kathy to help work with this body, work with city manager and staff, to figure out and help to facilitate the answer to your question. Because you could imagine having this in the community, let's say, at the Multicultural Family Center, for instance, and we have boards and people can go into small groups and talk about what they're excited about or what they'd want to see, or how this would be if we talked to the folks who are at the Water Sports Club or the folks who are at the RV Park, what would they like, the people who use the boat launch? We want to speak to the users, but we think that is best through, let's say, the city of Dubuque, so that it's not just a one-to-one, that those somehow make it into a public record and help to inform and influence. And so part of Kathy's role is not only to say, hey, let's help to give the money away, that's that one-third of profits that goes to the grants, it's also to be a good steward of that one-third of profits that go to Schmidt Island. And so to that end, you know, Kathy is very much the titular head of, how do we take the feedback, deploy the funds, making sure that we're working, moving forward? And so, I don't know, Kathy, if you have any thoughts about how we could help to facilitate? I know you said I was going to have you speak, but now you got to.
Brad, I know how you feel.
Yeah, that's Alex's calling card. He's like, I'm not going to make you talk, but start talking.
You know, I look at this using the opportunity the same way that we do with the grant program. Over the last couple of years, we've really relaunched the way that we look at grants and look at our charitable giving, getting out in the community, having the conversations with people, with organizations, seeing what they want, and then creating that list of priorities. We want the input from the community, we, you know, we want the city council buy-in, that's why we're here tonight. But it's more important to have that buy-in from the entire community and have them feel like they're heard. In the past, there has been some struggles with that master plan and, you know, concerns, we're going to take away River, Miller Riverview Park, we're going to get rid of the things that people like to do. That's not our intention at all. We want to hear what the citizens want. We want to make sure that, you know, it's very clear to them, we're not coming to the city council tonight and saying, hey, we want taxpayer dollars to make all of this happen. We want to create a plan that's going to minimize what we're coming to the city and asking for, but we want to make sure that we have that asset that the community wants. So definitely those engagement pieces are going to play an incredible role in the entire process.
Ms. Russell, if I could jump in too for a second, and then Mike, I'll come to you too for this, but we might be on the same wavelength there. I think one of the things that is really important for us, as we think about this, is that we actually have a built-in mechanism for this already. And it's our, it's our goals and priorities process that we go through and, and it's coming up in August. So the, it's in the twenties of August, 22nd, something like that, we start that process. You know, I think back to, it was actually, it was, again, it was RDG because I remember the events themselves. And it was back during the, it was like 2018, 2019, around there, when the council made it a priority that we were going to work on Central Avenue and the re-envisioning of that particular area of downtown. And the, I believe the city hired RDG, worked with Leisure Services and other folks to have these in the Multicultural Family Center, listening sessions on Central, you know, in the places where people were in that neighborhood, to find out what the, what their input was going to be and what they really wanted to see as a community. And that happened because we made it a priority as a city, or the city council at the time, I should say, made it a priority. I think that is a mechanism that's built in, that actually functions very well in this city, and I think it functions well for us, that, and it goes back to something that you said earlier, Alex, if everything is a priority, nothing is a priority. It's a, it's an annual speech that we get from City Manager Van Milligan at the goal-setting process, but it's absolutely true. So if we would, you know, I think that if we as a council want city staff to devote time, energy and resources to this, it has to be something that becomes a priority in our minds to be able to do that. So it's something for us to think about as we go into this process, whether that's at the top of our list or not. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I didn't bring any copies with me, but attached to the agenda tonight is a piece that you heard from Stacy speaking earlier. While Stacy partnered with Randy Gale, our Public Information Officer, and created this four-piece mailer that we're going to mail to every home and business in town and the next billing cycle of utility billing. So I think that'll be August and September. And it's going to tell them about what's going to happen today, but it's also going to tell them, and I apologize, but I am going to read this to you. It tells them what the vision is for the, for the island and that fact that we're partnering for development. It says, on the first page, Chaplain Schmidt Island is a connected island that welcomes visitors and the community to recreation, entertainment and the outdoors. And then it specifically tells them, what are the master plan goals? So it's not just all about pretty pictures. It's to connect the riverfront, make the island a larger regional walking and biking trail system and connect walkable areas along the riverfront with special focus on new investment areas. Connect the island with the port of Dubuque and adjoining neighborhoods. Next is celebrate the island. Highlight special island characteristics that make it a unique place to visit and stay. Plan for varying Mississippi River levels. Clean up the river for plants and animals. Next section, accessibility to the river. Improve accessibility to the river's edge and expand opportunities to get out on the water. And then the final element is spend the day and night. Bring new visitors to the island year-round with new complementary development. Interconnect existing and future uses so visitors can spend more time on the island. And so hopefully this mailer can kick off what's described, should this opportunity for the public to give further input about, well, what should happen from here out in? As is described, here's what's going to happen today.
Is that all you had, Ms. Russell?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, Mr. Frank, go ahead.
I look at this entire project as basically the shot in the arm that Dubuque needs to get back on the map, to get moving forward, to keep rolling. This is a massive investment that is a necessity to keep my generation in this community. If we don't do this, we're all leaving. If we don't have family-friendly entertainment for our kids, we're all leaving town. We're going to Madison, we're going to Rockford, we're going everywhere else but Dubuque. We have to do this. This is, this is a no-brainer. You asked for a couple of things to keep, or a couple of like wish ideas? The entertainment, all-age, focus. That has to happen. Otherwise, our families are going elsewhere. I like the idea of keeping the marinas, definitely Miller River. I understand we're going to need another hotel, go for it. But I bet, and the big thing that I can't stress is the feeling of connection to the river, whatever that looks like, whether it's a promenade, a boardwalk, however we create that. But keeping the marinas is key, so, because there are a massive amount of folks that have property, property down there, mainly their boats. So I don't want us to forget about the marinas as well as Miller River. So that's kind of my whole thing, is let's make it happen. But when we get to that whole dream stage, family, focus must be key. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Mr. Johnson?
I've been on the DRA Board for a long time now, since I was elected in 2000, seated in 2006. And it's all been exciting and fun and, and virtuous and magical to watch the things that happen in the community because of the existence of the DRA. But these last two years, it's been like being on an amusement park ride. I'll tell you, a work session with Alex for four hours, it's kind of like a week at Disneyland with a normal person, all jammed into one. It's pretty special. So we're going a great direction. We're going places that I'd ever imagined that we could get in this, this period of time, and we're proud of that. I do want you, Alex, to tell them how many other not-for-profit casinos like this exist because it's a pretty amazing number.
Well, I'm on quite the speaking circuit now because you can see I like to run my mouth, but being one of two nonprofits in America, we here in Dubuque and Prairie Meadows, who's run by my friend Gary Palmer in Des Moines, are literally the only two facilities that are organized like this. I think that's a function of what I call, what everyone calls Iowa Nice. But in my view, this is a model that can help other communities around the country, but specifically the world, in order to be able to help fund just basic city government. I mean, ultimately, this business is, we're like a country club for the general public. You just pay as you go, it's called slot machines. But those profits, if you're only going to have one or two in the community, in our case, we see how we can benefit and help to be a catalyst. And in my view, across the country, this model should be deployed to other places. We should to your, you know, Mr. Van Milligan, you know, should write a book on how to engage a nonprofit casino in your community and how it can benefit. Because the story of the DRA is the story of Dubuque. And I think it's, it's so unique and we should... And I think it's, it's so unique, and we shout it from the rooftops. Because we take it for granted here, I mean, we just do. We have to tell that story. But it's the most unique setup in all of America. And I'm born and raised third-generation casino employee. I never knew about this model until I got a call two years ago.
And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think I heard you say once that that was one of the things that made you say, what? Where? And really look at this, this position.
You can, you can operate casinos anywhere in America. You, you just can. And so, when I, you know, I get, as you can imagine, a lot of calls about opportunities. And what stuck out about this opportunity was this model. We had an opportunity to be able to come to a great community, and we've loved it. And so, more than anything else, and not just about me, is this, we've, we've provided a spark and kind of engaged you in a way that is different from, you know, just routine matters. And that spark, really, it lights the imagination of this community that, that Danny speaks so, so eloquently about, is that spark, that's what's going to help this going on. Because really, for the next 32 years, it's not an individual, it's not a person, it's not a good idea. It is really about a community realizing the power it has in this resource, and now unleashing that spark to bring this stuff to reality. Because that's what's going to help us keep it going. Because it's not just going to be the Pied Piper of moving forward. We, as a community, have to rally around and say what we want.
Danny is absolutely right. We've, we've got to do this. This is, this is next, and we're so lucky to be in a place where we can, because just about every place else can't do this. Thank you.
Ms. Wethel?
I have a little bit more of a specific question. I hate to do it after we just rallied everybody, because it was a really beautiful moment. But this question might be more for Mr. Jansen from Strand and Associates. We spoke, or you spoke a little bit about the difference between the floodway boundary and the 100 and 500-year flood boundaries. The insurance and the aspects of where we want to build, and when we look at these maps, which I think are incredibly helpful. We want to go to the 500-year. How do we prioritize what we put in the 500-year and the 100-year?
Great question. I think part of it is going to look at that risk consequence thing. I think what we've talked about thus far is, you know, building pads, inundation of buildings is, is a significant consequence. So, I think those would be the first, those building pads, where those buildings would have their footprint, I would suggest we seriously consider looking something close, definitely above the 100-year. You're, by regulation, by city ordinance, you're required to be a minimum of one foot above the 100-year. But getting closer to the 500-year, and I believe the 500-year is roughly two, two-and-a-half feet higher than the 100-year. I think it might be two-and-a-half feet higher. So, we're not talking about that much more, to get to the 500-year and really, really reduce that risk, because again, it has such a high consequence. You know, we can look at parking lots and a little bit differently. But I still think with parking lots, and in particular with roadways for access, we do not want those inundated on a 100-year event. So, did I answer your question?
You did. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's wrap this up. This was, this is an absolutely fantastic discussion. I mean, this is incredibly helpful for us to have this. Those of us that are, that have the honor of serving on the DRA board have had, you know, I've joked that I've seen some of these presentations probably 15 times at this point. They change a little bit every time, it's still helpful. But there are some new things in here tonight that we haven't actually talked about, definitely not, I had not seen publicly. So, really helpful to be able to see all of this. I have one specific question, I think, maybe two. But the, you were talking about, you know, your request from us for what, what we need next. My question is, as we look at steps for analysis for the next, Ryan, I think I heard you say that you had, you know, there was some analysis you're going to be doing next and ways that you're going to be looking at this in the months ahead. What will, what will help us and the community make the most educated decision? Like, what, what information is still coming our way that's going to help us as we go into goals and priorities sessions in August, to make an educated decision about what we want to dream about next and what's kind of on the horizon?
I'll give you a specific example, using Mr. Resnick's, let's say, example about the ball fields. Is, right now, there are four ball fields. We would work with Marie Ware's office to be able to say, what is the utilization of all four of those ball fields, plus the BMX park that's there? Is, if there's feedback, if you said, we would like to see a scenario where we could preserve, let's say, two of the ball fields, improve them, but also be able to have some form of residential attached, what would a pro forma, or let's say, an economic model look like to be able to achieve that? With those ball fields, for instance, the city receives money from the federal government to have those ball fields. If we move all or some, there'd have to be questions to say, if we did want to move the mouse, is there other land where those fields could go if we had, if we moved all of them? If you only used two of them, and the ball fields could still stay, and you could add things, we would want or need feedback that, that is even a scenario that we'd want to entertain.
I see.
If, if we wanted to say, hey, the city owns the Marina lease, and we're, I'll just put it in the open. If there is an additional use case there to partner up with the Patraski family who leases that, how could we begin in an open, you know, even a closed session, to begin to have a dialogue to say, how could we preserve some or all the RV space for, for there, that's there? Or how could a hotel kind of be in, in addition to? How could the, for instance, the, the River Museum help to have one of these facilities that are there? I think there are some just direct, you know, input that you can have, that you just channel that through, really Kathy, to be able to say, hey, these are, are some of our inputs, while we do some of the more longer-term, community-based piece? That is helpful. And the last piece that, you know, to answer that, but specifically, speaking directly to the private sector. There are developers who are watching this right now, who are in our community, who are interested in doing business on the island. I think it's important for them to know and see that you all are very engaged, are open to development, and are willing to, you know, review the tough cases that are needed to be able to move forward. And so, as we move, as we go through, I think if we figure this out right on Schmidt Island, that helps to unlock further development potential along the riverfront. Because effectively, what we're talking about is, how do we develop the riverfront over the next generation in Dubuque, Iowa? Because you own all this land, you have the ability to chart the course. And so, you can define how you want to channel that feedback, and we're open to it.
Mr. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with everything Alex said, but that's not going to happen by August. So, really, what I would see at the August goal-setting would be the council prioritizing Schmidt Island development, acknowledging you've already agreed to a $120 million project, and asking the question just, what's next? And that you would ask, that you get the information so that you can make those decisions on what's next. And so, that would all encompass everything Alex just said, and, but it would take, you know, it would happen over the next year. It wouldn't happen between now and August.
Agreed. I mean, we talked a lot about like apartments, for instance. That's going to take time.
Yep.
But there's a lot of hustle projects that we could do with the money we have to be able to move forward. And so, I think Mike's right, is we want to continue to be a top priority, but having a process, because this is going to take time.
Gotcha. Mr. Jones?
I'd just make a comment on the development, private development that's hanging in the wings. They need to speak up to Mike, or to Rick Dickinson, or to you. Because one thing about, about master plans is they have flexibility in it, because you don't know what the other guy's going to do, or what somebody's going to come along and offer. The reason there were three scenarios besides the ballparks in 2014 was because you don't know who's going to come knocking when they read this thing. And if somebody comes along with, with an idea that we don't even have yet, any of us in the room, if we don't know about it, we're not going to put that on the list, we're not going to be able to move it forward. So, I want to make sure that, that people understand that if they've got a great idea for something they'd like to, to do or help do, that they need to be talking to us, so that gets on everybody's radar and can be discussed and maybe happen, hopefully happen.
That leads directly into one of the things that I wanted to say. So, one of the things I want to invite everybody to do, anybody in the community, because you can go to Schmidt Island at any time you want to be able to go down there. There's a lot of different ways to enjoy the, the island right now. Go there. Look around. Spend some time. Dream a little bit. Let us know what you're thinking. I mean, these are the things that you have done, your team has done, everybody's had this opportunity. We've done it. We've been on walking tours down there. We've all kind of been in these conversations together. Now, we need everybody else to get in there too and be able to have those conversations with us. So, I really hope that people will, you know, I love hopping on a bike and riding around the island. So, get down there and do that, spend some time at Miller Riverview, you know, go to one of the concerts. Unfortunately, can't go to Jelly Roll, but you know, you can go to any other one you can go to. Get, get to some other concerts to be able to see, you know, who's, you know, what's going on there, what that feels like. And obviously, you know, go to the casino and have some fun in there too, and see what, what that feels like, what you really want to see. These are all things that are really important as far as impact goes. The final thing that I'll say is, you know, the, last night, I had the opportunity, it was, it was really an honor to be asked to join the, the group that was celebrating the 20th anniversary of the River Museum. And I remember when I, you know, last year, when we, we had the DRA event, the opening of the, the grants and the grant cycle that was going to be there, I had the opportunity to speak there too, and talked about the same thing, which was really what the Port of Dubuque used to be. And, you know, I remember growing up, last night, what I said when I, when I spoke to the room there was that, you know, in 1996, when I graduated from high school, I left. I took off. I did not see a future for me here in this city. I just didn't see it. It didn't feel like a place that was going to be what I was looking for at the time. And that's after growing up here. I mean, I spent good chunk of my, my childhood, most of my childhood here in Dubuque, and it's a city that raised me. But then, while I was gone, some really visionary people looked at the pile of dirt that I grew up with, and I mean that when I say pile of dirt, it was an actual pile of dirt. I mean, that's what basically was in the Port of Dubuque. Looked at that and said, this could be so much better. And it really took turning around and saying, oh, there's a river here. I mean, we just noticed that there's a river. Let's see how we can make that our front yard instead of the backyard, right? And when that happened, and I saw that happening while I was gone, it is one of the first things that really brought me back. You know, I had family here, all these different things. I've, I've always loved Dubuque, but I, but it was really those moments where I saw that kind of growth and what people had dreamed of, and what they had started to really look at, to be able to bring people like me, who had left, back into the community. And what I see now is a real opportunity to step back even further and look at the entire riverfront of Dubuque in a new way. What is it really going to be that connects the whole riverfront together? Because that's really kind of the next step here. How can we, and this idea, you know, you get the water taxis and doing those kinds of things. But what is it going to mean for the entire community? Mr. Sprank, your, your point, I think, is really a good one. This needs to be something that pulls in entire families. As we look at this, and then, how does that connect with how we can pull in entire families to the Port of Dubuque? North Port, South Port, all the way along the riverfront? How can we experience this river differently and in brand-new ways, and make it something that is for the next generation? So, as we go ahead here and think about what's, what's next, you know, we're going to make some important decisions. We still have to make them, important decisions about what is going to be the next phase of this development. And, and I, I hear a lot of support for that at this desk. I know that there is, there is support for that here on this council. As we make that next step, and we start to think about what are the next big things